I tried to speak very loud. I know it's hard to hear in the back and there has been issues with the sound, so if I'm yelling at you, it's not because I'm in a very good mood this evening. All right, so this meeting is being televised, streamed, and recorded by Born TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. Anyone online? Okay. Please refrain from using flash photography. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line: 1-929-205-6099, Zoom meeting ID 89712293538, password BORN all caps. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes, and I will call the public session to order an open session. Let's have a moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel.
To the flag, pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started on the next agenda, I just want to take a quick second to acknowledge and just send out our condolences. Corinne Moore, Town Planner for 2 decades, 40 years or so, yeah, very long time. Sadly, lost her mother yesterday, I do believe, and I just wanted to make sure. She's also a very respected elder for the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, so I just wanted to make sure that we send our condolences from the Select Board and myself to the family and the Toby and the Fernandez family. So thank you for that. We have nothing to report out from executive session, so we'll move on to public comments. Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to posting requirements of the open meeting law. I'm going to start with our honorable Steve Indixaros. He has a presentation for us, and we're glad to see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I love coming to Born, so thank you for having me. I'm sorry I missed you on the elected official nights. We were triple booked, but I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about what's been happening, and I hope you can ask questions, but if not, we'll see each other out there. So I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to you, Madam Chair, to Peter, and everybody here. I see you everywhere, and that's important as elected officials. All the good that goes on in this town. I just came from Hyannis all the way here. That's my district. I cover from Barnstable to Buzzards Bay, 45,000 people and pets. And I love doing this. My fifth year, third term. Couple of things I want to point out. People like that. I didn't know they were going to be here, but your police department, your fire department, your DPW, the rec department, building the playground out back, the senior center, I come here and do office hours. You really have a lot going on. It's very positive. I love it. I also want to thank you for being there for Wounded Warrior Project. Wounded Warrior Project is a national project that takes wounded American veterans from all over America, physically wounded, loss of limbs, or psychologically, and they bring them all over the country. One of their programs is riding bicycles, and we've been doing it for 14 years on Cape Cod. The first 12 were in Yarmouth, where I come from, at the time, and now I wanted to bring it to this district, and we did. And to see 50 wounded veterans get brought by bus from Yarmouth to Mass Maritime, get on bicycles for the first time together, and ride through Buzzards Bay, along the canal, with police, with firefighters, with the Coast Guard boat, you know, saluting them with the sandwich fire. It's very special. Then they come back, they go out to dinner, and then the next day they're in Falmouth. So I love that they come and the way you treat them. It's very special that we respect our first responders, our military veterans. This is the town that does it. Also, you have the only national cemetery in New England. Remember that. It's the only national cemetery in all of New England. 75,000 veterans rest there. One of them is my son. So it means a lot. The town just means a lot to my family. So when I see those wounded warriors, when I see what you do with veterans, and I think of the way you treated my family when Nick came home in a flag-draped coffin. I've never seen his body. I just saw the coffin. And he rests in that beautiful place, our national cemetery in the town of Born, which also has a canal and three federal bridges. That's a lot for a town. And in a way, I'm kind of in the middle of all of that. As a Gold Star father, as a former police officer, as your state representative, there's a lot that goes on, and I wanted to talk about a few of those things. I also sent my full comments to you, Peter, by email. If you could share them, I'd be happy. But some of the things that are in my mind that relate to you, one is Upper Cape Tech, right? We just had a great meeting. You know, Peter Meyer, all of you, you haven't given up. That problem has been there way longer than I've been your rep for five years, probably 30 years or more. It's complicated, but in some ways it shouldn't be. And a week ago, we almost lost a born police officer. Right now, we'd be having his funeral. So don't ever forget that. I went to the hospital. I met with the chief, who never left his officer and the officer. Seeing an officer in a stretcher reminded me of my own Sean Gannon, and then his dad. So the way you handled that, I'll never forget. What did we do about it? We used it kind of as a point where that's enough. We've got to do things. And that meeting yesterday at Upper Cape Tech was amazing. We had DOT officials, we had elected officials, Rep. Vieira, myself, we had the Select Board, we had citizens, some of them are here, and the school committee. Like, that's how it's supposed to work. Everybody working together. And it wasn't just a meeting where we talked about the problem and then, you know, said, oh, we'll do something. They're doing it. So I want to make sure we know that. You know, they're going to put traffic lights at that exit, at the bottom of the hill. We've been asking for that for years. The hang-up is they don't technically qualify with all the rules that are out there, but you can put temporary ones, and they're going to. And they'll look permanent. That's one thing. They're going to re-mock the area. They're going to slow down traffic with signs. They're going to make it a school zone, which should have been years ago, but high schools are exempt. Not now. That's been fixed. I also give credit to Louisa, the woman from Mass DOT. She's been amazing. They brought her along to help with the bridges, which is a whole other issue. But meeting her and going to meetings, I see what she is. She's a problem solver. And that was a great meeting. It's not perfect. I think we still need a crosswalk with the piano key design, and we need sidewalks. But you can't do a crosswalk on a state road unless there's sidewalks. So it's complicated, but we're not going to give up. But having us all together, using a near tragedy to improve safety, it's working. Also, I'm concerned with the right-to-shelter law. That's still out there. You know, I'm trying to have it amended, but we are spending billions of Massachusetts taxpayer money on the right-to-shelter law. You're familiar with it. It's still there. I'm trying to amend it to make it more focused, and I'd also like to see complete, real background checks before we put people living together in hotels or whatever. Right now, they're not doing complete background checks, so that's on my list. The Born and Sagamore Bridge Project. You all know a lot about that. You're at every meeting. We have beautiful meetings in here where they go over everything. Right now, the Sagamore is happening. So sadly, in a way, they're meeting with the homeowners who are going to lose their home, and that is very difficult. That's eminent domain. It's legal. It's for the public good, but just think about that. And so we're in the middle of trying to perhaps move one or two of the homes, but in general, make sure at least that they get everything they deserve. And from what I've heard, I want you to know, from the homeowners that are worried, they're reporting that Mass DOT has been very good. There's one home, remember, on this side of the bridge, one, and that woman is 94, and her home, like, is right on the canal, but right near the bridge. So they're working on a plan where they're going to potentially buy a house that's further down on the canal, right on the water, pay for it, and move them. So that's kind of the example of what we can do. They're also starting the test borings. So Sagamore is funded, and that's happening. And remember, it's not just new bridges, it's new interchanges, which are really something to look at. The key is, we can't ever let the Born Bridge slide. We've got to keep fighting for that funding. I work with your state senator, Dylan Fernandez, Rep. Vieira, who, don't forget, is the dean. He's the senior elected official on the Cape from the state. But also, we have Congressman Keating, who lives in Born, and then our senators. We're working hard to try to get money for Born, because the worst scenario is if we don't, and they have to close that bridge to restore it. Can you imagine what that'll be like? So that's on our radar. We cannot let go of that. And the last two things I would say, I've got a lot, but these are, you know, big ones. Upper Cape Tech, right-to-shelter law, Born and Sagamore Bridge, and interchanges. Pecasset Mental Health, that's in your town, too. The state wants to close that. And Peter and many of us were there to diplomatically push back. And it's working, but it's not done yet. That's part of the budget, which has not been voted in yet. So remember that. That is the only mental health facility that's state-run on Cape Cod and the islands. If that closes, where will those people go? We have a proposal that keeps it open and actually adds on to it. They have space. So keep it open and take some of those rooms that are empty and make them available. That's part of the plan. And then keeping the sandwich gate open, I know that's not in Born, but that gate that enters Joint Base Cape Cod is huge. A lot of people, veterans, Coast Guard people that are working out there, they go in and out of that entrance hundreds of times a day. That was going to be closed, and because of who we are, we were able to keep it open, and it looks like it's going to stay open. If that closes, that changes Born, because everybody will be coming in the Born entrance, and we don't want that. So I'm working on all of that. I'm proud to work with my fellow electeds. I want you to know, I serve on four committees. Ways and Means, which is the most powerful committee in the Commonwealth. We're the ones that approve the budget. That's a $65 billion budget has to come through our committee. I'm on the Public Safety and Homeland Security, which is perfect for me. I'm also on Emergency Management and Preparedness. We have to be ready for floods, and how about fires? We had a horrible fire at Joint Base Cape Cod that could have affected Upper Cape Tech, so luckily that was put out. And I'm on the Mental Health and Substance Use Committee. Too many people are struggling with addiction, and too many are dying. That's why I'm on those committees. We have 7,000 bills under consideration. I filed 35. And I want everyone to know, my door is always open. I don't like sitting in an office. I like being around. So the best way is email. It's stephen dot exaros at ma house dot gov. You have that in writing. That's the best way. It's better than a phone call, and that is an official email that no one sees. It's confidential, and that way I can help you with whatever issue. And every last Friday of the month, I'm in this building doing office hours. So you can obviously come in, say hello, but don't wait for office hours. Just reach out. And I want to end with, be proud of your town. I know you are, and you should be, but kind of as an outsider, what I see is so impressive, and I'm proud to represent you. So that's what I wanted to kind of tell you. If you have questions, I'm available. If you're not able to because it's public comment, I understand, but reach out. We've got to keep working together and get things done. And I would end with, always be proud to be an American, especially in today's world. So I would end with Happy Flag Day, which was on Saturday, and Happy 250th Birthday to any Army soldiers that are out there, and be ready over the next year for some huge celebrations for the 250th Birthday of America. Those are going to be a lot of events right here in Massachusetts. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay.
So I saw we have quite a few people signed up for public comment. I just want to be sure before we move on. Are these all public comments on non-agenda items? Just double checking? All right, so I think we can, we want to grab the list and, or just stand up. If you're on the list, come up to the mic and say your name and your village and...
Have at it?
Sure, come on up, sir.
Steve Valentine from Katamit, representing the Born Conservation Trust. A little over, well, almost a year ago, end of last summer, the Born Conservation Trust signed an agreement for the 30-acre Austin parcel in Pecasset. I felt it was a valuable parcel for preservation and for town involvement, but knowing that the town really could not act as fast as necessary to keep it from development, I signed a purchase and sale agreement at that time, and then hoped to pursue involvement with financial support from the town. Initially, I contacted Bob Profit from the Water District, Bob Gray from Conservation, just to make sure there was interest, and I thought quite surely they would be. I'll make this brief anyway, by the way. I'm not going to go on all night. Then I called an old friend with some familiarity with Town Hall. I called Barry Johnson, and I presented this to him and hoped for some help to guide this through the process of town involvement. The application to the Open Space and CPA Committees, the meetings of various boards in town, including yourselves, and then on to the approval of our proposal at town meeting. And Bob was, I mean, Barry was very helpful with this process, and I think he deserves some credit for that. When the Conservation Trust purchased the property, we applied for a state forestry grant, and we were successful in this application. So tonight, I am presenting a check to the town of Born to help offset the CPA funds that were used for the purchase of the conservation restriction on the property. And I ask that you will read this letter into the minutes.
And accept this check from Born Conservation Trust.
Okay, mine, too. Read that aloud?
We don't have on the agenda to accept it formally.
Yes, please, give me the process. Yes, please, Marlene.
Yeah, this is...
Because it wasn't an agenda item, so how...
It's not an agenda item. We should bring this back to accept it formally as an agenda item.
As an agenda item. So should I give it back to him and have him come to another meeting?
I would take the check.
Take the check.
Here's the money.
All right, so can I read the letter, though? Is it okay to read the letter?
He can read the letter.
Yeah.
You should not be involved with public comment.
I knew that, but I was like, yeah.
Is that a live check?
It's a bank check.
Is it a live check?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's not how we should do this.
You've got to cash it.
It's got the right zeros.
Am I supposed to say the amount or no?
No.
No.
No, 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 no. So I'm going to give it to, I'm going to pass it to, give it to Marlene, please.
We may need you, Chief.
I don't want to hold it, no.
We may need you, Chief, to escort the town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
To a safe.
I'll let you have the mic, and then we can move on.
I'm offering this letter to the Board of Selectmen. Hand-delivered this date is a check from the Born Conservation Trust payable to the town of Born in the amount of $1,050,000.
Wow.
This payment represents a reimbursement of the state forestry grant for one-half of the purchase price of the Austin property on County Road adjacent to the Water District property. These funds are earmarked for the Open Space Reserve account of the CPA Committee overseen by the CPA Committee and the town of Born. The trustees of the Born Conservation Trust thank the Board of Selectmen, the Open Space and CPA Committees, the Conservation Commission, in addition to the residents of the town of Born, for their assistance in completing this important acquisition for conservation. Sincerely, Stephen Valentine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. John York is next on our list of public comment.
Maybe we can get it posted tomorrow for Friday for a Zoom meeting. Maybe we can get it done quickly so that way they can deposit.
I would give it to Marlene, and she can accompany. How are you doing, Mr. York? Please.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. The guy said it wasn't an agenda item, so I'm a little...
You can mail it.
I'll give it to the Finance Director.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is John York. I live at 20 Squeety Harbor Road. So I also attended the meetings that Rep. Zaros spoke about at the Vogts School and then a follow-on meeting at the library yesterday. The subject was roadway safety. A lot of that question has to do with pedestrian safety. Sandwich Road, both the Vogts School and Gala Arena are important public facilities. They're regional public facilities, heavily attended, both of them. They use each other's parking lots for overflow. There's no safe way to get between them. I would say even on a car, but definitely not on foot. So the state is paying attention now, and they want to solve that problem, which is good. They have a short-term solution, which is the traffic lights. Their medium-term solution is to take some of the roadway plans that are part of the Bridge South Interchange Plan and move them ahead of actually building the bridge span. And those would be improvements for the entrance to Sandwich, from Sandwich Road to the Vogts School. Now, those plans haven't been that carefully vetted. The details, the real details of the roundabout they want and all of that. Conceptually, what they've shown is a great thing, but if they're going to push it ahead, then the town needs to push ahead. They're paying attention to the details on that, because I don't, the plans that are being presented for the interchanges are not construction plans. They are concepts only. The whole project is to be built as a design build, which means there will be no construction plans, even when the construction bid is let, and that will happen during the process of constructing it. So the town needs to be on board, on alert through that process. But that process might be starting a whole lot sooner for certain aspects, and that's Mass DOT's current plan. So the town is going to have to be on board a whole lot sooner. And I'll cut to the chase of why I'm here to speak to you. The Born-South Interchange has numerous places where the current concept will require exemptions, exceptions, from Mass DOT's own rules and requirements for roadways. None of those apply to cars. They're giving cars everything the rules require plus, above and beyond. But on bicycle and pedestrian issues, they are cutting corners. They're open about the fact that they're cutting corners, except they aren't, because when they're, in their reports where they're required to divulge the permits that this thing, this project will require going forward, they don't mention that they're going to require design exception approvals. They don't like to talk about it. I think that it's in our town's interest to voice clearly and concisely to Mass DOT that our town desires that this project meet all requirements for pedestrian and bicycle facilities. These are safety issues, as we saw at Upper Cape Tech. They should not be exceptions. This project, the bridge project, has been talked about and worked on since 2017, with back with Tom Kehire's study group, and then the Corps of Engineers Rehabilitation Study, and finally, the project we're working on now. These problems, and many of these issues, like the Vogts School, have been punted down the road because supposedly the bridge project... have been punted down the road because supposedly the bridge project...
One minute, we gotta finish up, yeah.
I'll, I'll get there in one minute. Supposedly the bridge project was going to complete all those. Now they're putting together plans for the bridge projects, which are gonna require the same exceptions they've been giving under the name of the Bridge Project Will Fix It. Those, the bike paths we're talking about, just on the Bourne-South Rotary, to build them today, not ten years from now with the inflated values, would be ten to twenty million dollars. Our town has, has had a little egg on their face lately about not applying for grants on time. We're talking about ten to twenty million dollars that belong in this project according to Mastioti's own rules. And Mastioti is on the cusp of writing themselves exceptions. Our town should stand up for the twenty million dollars we deserve, the facilities we'll get will be worth the twenty million. And it's, our town doesn't need more egg on its face. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we have Daniel and Jay Maderas, but it looks like you're here to talk about the NOI, so that'll have to wait when we get there. Thank you. Alright, moving on. Thank you, everyone. So, we are at number five, Hampton Inn Request to Extend License Agreement for Use of Property. I don't know who's speaking on this, are they here to... Oh, okay, here we go, thank you.
Hi, I'm Brenna Tenasco, I am with the ownership property of the Hampton Inn, right across the street from us here. I just wanna give a quick little backstory, because when we originally had the land lease, most of the members here weren't necessarily on the board, so just so a little background for you guys to know. The license agreement was originally established to allow the hotel to lease a small parcel of land that was owned by the town between the hotel property and the Cape Cod Canal. The purpose was really to support the health of the native plants and the environment and protect the natural landscape, but also allowing us to do a little bit of extra for the community and for our guests, make it a safer place. Improve the guest experience and do a little bit of cleanup of the overgrown brush and that kind of thing that was in the area. So it was previously unused, we've done some landscaping there just to keep it cleaned up. Take, make sure it maintains, excuse me, make sure it maintains a nice visual effect for our guests and for the community. And we're asking for another extension on it so we can continue to work towards that.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the board or questions regarding the situation?
I just, I was kinda curious as how they, the previous board decided on the five thousand dollars.
It was just, it's just a number right for out there when I made the motion many years ago.
And one of the reasons I asked that question is, you know, the property, when you look at the map, that's part of the agreement, it says property can't be developed without a special permit, the adjacent property, that now has a special permit. And it's going to be developed and may want to enter into a similar agreement as there's land in front of that project as well. So, I just, that's the only question I had, is like, if we establish this as precedent, is that the number? Is that what we should be doing as a number?
Well, you're also getting hotel, you know, hotel tax revenue out of it as well as, you know, regular property tax revenue, so they're bringing, they're bringing people into the town, they're helping every businesses, so you're getting revenue in other ways.
Was it based on like, any type of assessed value of the property or square footage, average cost?
It was just a way of, you know, just working to get a public-private partnership as a way of giving back.
See, any other questions? Alright, does anyone entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we extend the agreement with Downe Hotels, Inc., the parent company for the hotel here in town, the Hampton Inn, term to be extended through December thirty first, 2027.
Alright, we have a motion by Peter.
With the five thousand dollar lease fee.
Yes.
Agreement.
Give a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none. I will do a roll call vote. I do wanna make that habit, Ann Marie?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes? Bye. There is a, there are a, thank you very much. Alright, moving on, we have a presentation by our Honorable Police Chief regarding summer enforcement and the operations plan.
Thank the Select Board for making some time for me today. With me today is my Administrative Lieutenant for Inocent Authority. He will be acting as the officer in charge during the Fourth of July operations. I'll be there as well, but he'll be the man on the ground in most of the operations. Point of this conversation is just to get it out before yourselves and the community as to what our plan is for summer operations specifically around the Fourth of July and then extending on through. We have had some issues creep up in the last few years that resulted in a change of our operations last year. It was what we deemed to be very successful, we got a lot of positive feedback. I'm gonna go over a little bit of that right now. So, on the top part of this, you'll see what our, let's start on the bottom. So on the bottom, it says July third to fourth, 2023, from three PM to four AM. So that's three PM on July third to four AM on July fourth, which was our busiest time in 2023. We had ninety-eight calls for service, zeros arrests, but we had three requests for mutual aid assistance disturbances. One of these was a request from Town of Falmouth for assistance from us. Two of them were requests from our town to other agencies, because the amount, the situations we were running into overwhelmed our department. Two of these were tumultuous situations, one Sagmo Beach and one in Buzzards Bay, that resulted in assaults and battery on individuals. We also had quite a bit of fires that were set on beaches and other areas that left some remnants on the beaches, which we'll show in a later photo. Fast forward to the next year, we put forward a plan with increased enforcement on the beaches, increased presence. We had ATVs, foot patrols, community service officers, checkpoints, signage, community notification. We had a hundred fifty-nine calls for service, so a much, a much higher rate of calls for service. One arrest, which was a arrest for disorderly conduct and larceny. Essentially, somebody stole somebody's purse and then decided to argue and fight. And, but we had zero requests for mutual aid, zero out-of-control situations, and zero assaults and battery that result of any of the events that we were responding to. We did issue eight bylaw violations for minors and possession of alcohol, which was an area that we were concentrating on enforcement. We chose the bylaw violation because, so we can, various options we go. We can go to the criminal end of it by creating criminal record for them. Or we can go to the town bylaw record, which gives them an opportunity to pay that fine before it becomes a criminal matter. This is an education phase, it's also a way of making sure that we are enforcing our bylaws. I believe that this was a very successful operation, we want to continue on that with picking up on some things that we also noticed from last year. One of those things that we noticed at the end of the events last year was the litter and garbage that was left on the beach. Our DPW Services did a phenomenal job of cleaning up after this. But, communication with the public as to if they are gonna enjoy our resources, they need to be responsible for cleaning that up. If not, we'll have to take enforcement actions on them, because it's not fair to the community, it's not fair to the natural resources we have. It's also not fair to our Department of Public Works that they have to put resources into cleaning this up. But as you see, the next day, so this one right here was on the third of July. The morning of the fifth of July, everything is removed by DPW. Or I will say there were some residents that did go out onto the beaches and clean that up. So that was a very nice thing, we saw some kids that were picking up, it was nice to see that. Reason for our attention on the fires, I think some of you may remember this from last year, we showed these photos. The items that are circled are nails that were on the beach, that were left from pallets that were burnt. On to the right, we have a fire that was, had glass that gets thrown into it. While we do, I would love to have fire, a fire on the beach and with my family and everything else. But unfortunately, not everyone respects the environment as much as we would like. And these are very dangerous when they, if somebody has embers, they throw, stand on top of it. And then people are walking on the beach and there's nails, glass, and hot embers. So, it's a prohibition on fires, that's already in the bylaws, we're just enforcing those. And we do that from pretty much the start of the summer to the end of the summer. Educate early, so we don't have, hopefully have to enforce anything. One of the things that we do on Fourth of July and throughout for major events is we strategically position people around at these events. I'm gonna talk mostly about Sagmo Beach, but there are other areas in town that we also put people into. These are having ATV patrols, e-bike patrols, regular bicycle patrols, foot patrols, community service officers. Essentially, we operate as two separate departments on the day of, on these major events. We have the patrol operations, which are regular patrol officers, and then we have the special operations team that handles these specialized events. It works out very well. We have different command staff for each event and then a unified command over the entire department. Some of the areas that we're gonna be concentrating on this year, very similar to last year, but they're going to be the enforcement of the town regulations for possession of alcohol by minors. It's going to be the enforcement of the regulations regarding the fires and all grills. So, the town bylaw specifies charcoal grills, the, but then subsection of that lists that the Select Board can vote additional regulations. In nineteen ninety-nine, the Select Board voted to have all grills enforced by that. So, all grills. And one of the things we noticed on the beaches last year were a lot of propane tanks. Propane tanks, fire, large congested, large populations of people, not the safest thing for us. So we will be concentrating on that enforcement hours. All beaches under the town regulations are, do close at ten PM, we'll be enforcing that. With the events of last year, by ten thirty PM, the beaches were clear. And everyone left the beaches in an orderly fashion, that was through communication. We essentially at ten fifteen, we gave announcement at ten, ten PM, at ten fifteen, that's when we started driving along the beaches with ATV and moving people along. Prohibitionation on the open containers of alcohol, you can't just move the alcohol onto the public roads. Bylaw disturbances, that's intoxicated individuals, parking regulations, public consumption of marijuana, increased OUI enforcement, increased OUI and alcohol drug enforcement, and enforcement of litter, littering regulations. We'd like to get this out by public awareness campaign, presentations at the Select Board, presentations through our media partners, Facebook, Instagram, X, and then our very old message boards. We do intend on having at the main points of events, event access, having officers that are monitoring and collecting items in advance of them getting onto the beach, so we're not dealing with them later. So as people start going down to set up, educating through sign boards, advising them they can't bring the items down that are prohibited. And then, should make the evening go much easier. Then parking enforcement activities, CSOs do a phenomenal job. We have one CSO, Olivia Barry, that's returning this year. And we have a new one, Thomas Sullivan. They're completing their training this week and then they'll be going out to do parking enforcement out in the public, starting the end of this week. They started using an e-ticketing platform last year that was very successful, as Liz I'm sure is aware of. That allows us to do the tickets right from a tablet, we're able to take photos of the violations and then share that out with both the appeals officer and also the violator. Electronic appeals will be allowed online this year. So that will be through Plymouth County Parking dot com?
Ford.
Org. And they can pay their ticket or appeal their ticket right online. Also our improved signage, phenomenal partnership with DPW and Select Board and Administrator's Office last year. Great signage in the Sagmo Beach area and also on the whole north side. And that seemed to be well-received in most areas. Another thing that we have is a public zone, a public, a parking zone portal that is concentrating on the north side. We'll be expanding that as we do more zones. But this is available for the public to go on to, link dot bournepolice dot com slash parking zones. And it shows where all the parking signs are, all those zones that are created by those. And so people can plan ahead of time so they know where they can go. And that's what I have for you, I would be open to entertain any questions this board or anyone else may have.
The one thing to... Peter?
Golf carts, unregistered light low speed. I know in my neighborhood, I've had neighbors who have had unregistered ones who driving around the dock and I'm trying to, I'm trying to back out, all of a sudden I almost hit something, so.
Yep, so golf carts are not allowed, if that personal motorized vehicles is the bylaw, so they are not allowed unless they are registered low-speed vehicle. If anyone sees those, I recommend they call the department dispatch, we will dispatch out. It can result in the, in the, in the golf cart being towed, or a fine. But they are not safe to be on the roads, they are not legal to be on the roads. They're also, the low-speed vehicles are not legal to be driving down the beach walkways in areas, I think, you're, I think you're in neck of the woods, it's one of those areas. A low-speed vehicle must operate, just like any other vehicle, on the public roads and use public parking and have a beach sticker.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna say, I, I wanna say that it's very proactive, you seem to really be doing a good job in the spirit of community policing, and so, I think it sounds really good and I appreciate the work that you've all been doing, thank you.
Anyone else on the Select Board, yeah, Ann Marie?
And I'm, I'm seeing those pallets piling up outside of businesses already and that's, you know, and I remember we talked about it last year, that you were trying to reach out to those businesses in, in the hopes of them not riding free and for the taking and we know where they end up.
So starting next week, we'll start having patrols going out to those businesses in the areas, letting them know that's probably not the best, we can't prevent them from doing it, but hopefully...
At least around near the fort, right?
They will educate that, that's not the best thing for our area.
Just, I'm really, really happy to see the improvements from last year.
I see you Patty, we see your hand.
Really happy about the improvement from last year this year and it'll be interesting, because this year is a Friday night, so.
It's, it's a Friday night, but I'm also, last year was split between two weekends because it was the middle of the week. This year, we hopefully can concentrate our attention on one weekend, but we are prepared to handle whatever might...
And I echo Ann Marie's sentiments about the pallets, yeah.
That's, that's wicked, the nails and everything, so it's, that's really good that you're being proactive.
Thank you, there is one other, the area that we are a bit concerned with, not really concerned, but the piping plovers are out and so...
Yes.
They have marked those areas, so that would be a trespassing zone that we have to deal with. And it is something that the public should be aware of, that they should not be going into those areas.
Alright, if no one on the Select Board has any comments, I can send it up to Patty online, she has her hand up. Patty Duffy?
Can you hear me, Patty?
I can, we can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask if you'd be reinforcing the handicap parking at all, because I have a daughter in a wheelchair and it's just, it's really hard to find a parking space at a number of different places, because those places don't seem to be reinforced and I would really appreciate that reinforcement.
So, yes, that is an area that we are concentrating on throughout the summer. Our CSOs are trained in how to identify the areas that are, people can legally park with a handicap placard and also those areas that individuals, like the hash marks, that an individual cannot have their vehicle obstructing so that a handicap van can park and an individual can get out with a access ramp. So, thank you for that, but we will be making sure that is enforced heavily this summer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Patty.
Also, I understand Community National Night Out is not in August, it's gonna be on nine eleven this year?
Correctly, so last year we changed the, last night we had, last year we had to move that due to weather. And it ended up being a benefit for the town, we found, because number one, we had more resources available to us. Also, we're able to honor a very important event in our country, so we'll be holding that on September eleventh, we're still working out the details.
I just wanna get the word out now, so that...
Yes, Marlene informed us on that this morning and straightened that out, thank you. Alright, and if there's no other questions, maybe in the audience, everyone's all set? Alright, thank you, that was awesome.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, moving on, so we have a vote to accept gift card stalling, two thousand dollars to be distributed to sworn personnel in the police and fire departments. I'm not, I think, Marlene, you're gonna be speaking in this, I know a little bit about it, but I don't know enough, I'm gonna let Marlene take the floor.
Yeah, thanks. So, I do wanna just take a minute to fill the board in here, because this is not a usual, this is not a usual run of the mill gift. First, I do want to acknowledge that they've already been received and they're in the possession of both of the chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief. I do want to acknowledge that they were distributed on, to some personnel on, in the fire department. We have since gotten them all back, so there was, some of them were distributed too early. It is important that we be mindful of the process and make sure that we accept these gifts first. Now, the facts are that there are, that in the town's possession, we have eighty gift cards to a local restaurant. And each gift card is in the denomination of twenty-five dollars. Now, some of, some of the things that it's important for the board to understand are these gift cards were purchased by a resident of Pocasset, a private citizen. And his intention is that they be given to each sworn member in the police department and in the fire department. Now, there, there are enough gift cards for each sworn member. Now, there, there are enough gift cards for each sworn member. However, I do want to let the board know, that is not the entire department. So, that's, that's one point. So, the intention of the individual who purchased the gift card is that they will be given to the uniformed members of the departments. It is very important that it is clear that these gift cards were not donated or given by the business. It's a, it's a restaurant that we inspect annually, it's a restaurant that holds a number of licenses and enforcement actions may be necessary in the future. There was an email in, in the fire department to a very small group of staff that misidentified the source of the gift cards as coming from the owner, and both the owner's name and the business name were identified in that email. That is not correct. And I called the owner, and I spoke with him, and I explained what I would be doing tonight, and, and for, you know, essentially his protection as well. I want to be very clear that they were, that these are not gift, that would not be appropriate. It would not be appropriate for town employees to be accepting gifts from, directly from a business that we have licensure, enforcement, and inspection responsibilities on. So, we did make sure that these were purchased by a private citizen. So, we do not have a conflict. If the board chooses to accept the gift, then after your vote, the chiefs can distribute them to the sworn members of the departments. But because, oh, I'm sorry, the other thing I need to, the other thing I need to make sure that I say is that they were dropped off at the stations by the owner of the business. So, there's the appearance that they were from the business. As I said, I did call, I did confirm, I had the conversation, but I just want to be really upfront about the facts of what happened. We're very grateful, we can't always necessarily control how things get delivered to us. I think tonight's a good example. There's, there's a way that we would prefer things happen. We're very grateful, and, you know, we, we understand that the people's hearts are in the right place, and the sentiment is good. We're just trying to make sure nobody gets in trouble unintentionally. There are strict ethics laws, and there's clearly in this case, I'm also trying to make sure that the business owner is not in any way put in a bad situation. So, there is no conflict. We didn't handle it 100% perfectly, but it's an experience we've learned from, nothing bad, nothing bad has actually happened, and if the board chooses to accept the gift, then we can hand them out.
Okay. Select board, any comments or discussion related to this? For handling that.
I think... Make a motion that we have vote, a motion to accept the gift cards totaling $2,000 to be distributed to sworn personnel in the born police and the born fire departments.
Second? We have a motion from Peter, second, I mean, sorry, yeah, motion from Peter, second from MJ. Any further discussion?
This is a tough one. And the way this played out, it's, it's not a good look. It's not a good, you know, I get, yeah, the heart was in the right place, but why couldn't the individual just?
Well...
You know? It's, yeah, this is not a good look. This is just not a good look, at all. I mean, I, I, you know, appreciate, we all want to appreciate the service to the community. When you start handing out money to officers...
I mean, so I'll let everyone else go first. So, Jean, do you have any thoughts?
Everything was retrieved, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a lesson learned, and we're making it very clear in a public way that this is what the intentions were. So, I feel comfortable about this, but, you know, it's, as we saw tonight, it's hard to...
It's hard to control.
Hard to control. It's hard to control. It just was not, it just did not play out the right way at all. And it just, you know... But it's still, it's still a gift that we very much appreciate. It's disappointing the entire department can't benefit from it, and some, but...
I think that was my...
It takes an entire department. I mean, you know, they might not be in uniform, but they contribute to the overall health and well-being of the community by the work that they do.
And I think for myself, I mean, I think it's a wonderful gift, it's a great gesture, and Marlene said there's no conflict, so, I mean, I think again, I wish it was done differently to avoid any appearance of conflict at all in the first place.
All the best intentions.
And it would have been, I do, I do feel sad that, you know, it wasn't for everyone, right? That's the only other thing. So, all right, so no further discussion, I guess I'll do a roll call on this.
We need a roll call.
You don't need a roll call.
I know, I like to do, I'm doing roll call for all my votes from here on out, if that's...
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, I do enjoy doing that. I think it's important. Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call vote. Amory?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty, moving on. Yes, she's, okay, so we're at number eight, the debriefing on the May 28 C W M P discussion.
That's a good word for it.
So, I guess we'll move right down to, to A, the schedule for the watershed permit application, I think, do I am I handing that to you to discuss for us?
Yes. So, on page 15 in your packet, we did put together a schedule for you. We contacted DEP and asked for some examples. This follows kind of in the format, that, of the examples that DEP sent to us, and I won't, I won't read it to you, it's in, but this lays out kind of, as far as I can see at this point, kind of some major milestones along the way for your consideration.
So, I'm going to start with the board, see if anyone has comments, questions, thoughts. We did ask Marlene to put this together, and she did get it to us. This is what's necessary to, to file the NOI, so.
And...
Yes, please. Of course.
In your conversations with DEP, did they indicate that five years is really the amount of time we need for creating the application for the watershed permits? My concern is, you know, 2030 is the end, is the last possible date, July of 2030, to apply for the permit application, I think of Barnstable that applied in June of 2024 and was rejected, they were not issued the permits. And while they have enough time, right, to reissue, which I believe they did, I'm just concerned if that was a, that, in that event, that, you know, they don't accept our application and issue the permit, we're out of time. So, is five years the, do you, I mean, looking at this, it does look like five years is what we need? I didn't know in your conversations with DEP if they thought that five years, that's traditionally what people are choosing to submit.
So, that's not, that's not a question, I did not ask that question. So, that's not a question I asked. This is literally set up because that's the deadline in the law.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we could be ahead of the deadline.
Yeah.
Right?
It says no later than July 30, 2030.
Right, right.
And, you know, when you read about the process, it's on a set in stone process, it's a process, these are milestones, and so you can go, milestones mean that you track, you know, it's like a Gantt chart, really, it's, the application itself is, I think, like, kind of like a Gantt chart, and it's like any construction project, you know, you kind of track where you are, and it gives you goals to meet, and, you know, if you start going behind, then you know that you're going to have to accelerate your, your work, so. I mean, I think that there are decisions that we're going to have to make during the time.
Absolutely.
And the draft CWMP kind of had five years for like, for finalizing, for like, study, analysis, permitting, and design, so, you know, there's a lot of permitting that's going to go, until we kind of get down the track, I don't think we're going to know exactly what we have to do. So, I thought the milestones were good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the schedule itself seems reasonable. I mean, the amount of time, some, some things will take longer than others with this specific schedule, just in, you know, the process that we've had thus far in, with the CWMP.
Agreed. Peter, any comments?
No, I guess looking at the calendar, I guess looking at the $200,000 budget for limited scope, that's the $200,000 we appropriated at town meeting, this past town meeting?
Just to get started, because there's several times when we're going to go through back. Yeah, there's, we're going to be asking for more money.
The plans, yeah, the plans themselves.
And we're probably meeting July 1st, is it? For our next meeting? Does that sound right?
Oh, yes, select board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Because our notice of intent applications do no later than July 7th, so I want to make sure that, you know, if the board goes in that direction, that we get it done, because the way the motion is written tonight, I don't think we can approve, you know, make a motion to approve it tonight, can we?
Yeah, we can.
People know where I stand on it, so, I mean, so that's not the issue here, but I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I think that filing a notice of intent for watersheds for Finney's Harbor and McGansey fatigue harbor, a law and overdue, should be done, so. It's, but that's just, I'm just one person.
All right. So, what is the board's pleasure? Are we making a motion here to accept this draft and get it filed? What are we doing?
I can make a motion. I mean, if there's no, if no one else has any concern, I think we need to move forward.
Yeah, does anyone in the audience have anything to say, or maybe some of your folks that, we had some other public comments maybe to speak on that, too, after Ms. Mealy?
Good evening. Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. I've spent about 10 man days trying to learn and understand, first, the comprehensive wastewater plan, management plan, and now NOIs for watershed permits. Born is not the first to go down this path, this path, but you are almost the last. So, nothing that you're going to have to do in the next couple of weeks is going to be breaking any sound barriers or bringing anything that nobody else has done before, because everybody else has already done this.
Yep.
So, you literally are going to get forms, and you're going to cross out Falmouth, and you're going to put Born. You're going to cross out Duxbury and put Born. I mean, it's, there's work to be done, there's no question about that. I would like to tell you that I am completely supportive of the approach the town administrator has put forward to you tonight. After talking and spending a better part of the weekend talking with a Tim Pascoe Ramirez at the Cape Cod Commission about filing a notice of intent for a watershed permit, and utilizing much of what you already have accomplished with the application for the comprehensive wastewater management plan, to then go forward with filling out and identifying and applying for this notice of intent in a timely matter. Your time, you should have a special meeting to do nothing but sign this thing in June and get it done, because July 7th is it. And then now you're starting to get into the other side of this, which says that if you don't file for a notice of intent, then you have to go the other way, which is to go with the installation of IA systems in the affected areas within five years. That puts the entire cost, the entire development, entire infrastructure on top of the residents in those areas. And right now, there's only two. It's critique and...
Finney's.
I'm sorry, it's critique and...
Finney's Harbor.
Thank you, Finney's Harbor. For those that are at home watching, the town administrator has identified that the notice of intent has to be filed by July 7th. They have to secure and consulting and engineering and special counsel during the summer and the fall of 2025, and as Peter's pointing out, there's a $200,000 money available that we voted at town meeting recently. Something unique to Born is that we need to address the environmental impact report, the draft and the final that was requested of us by MIPA, and that has been identified as one of the items by the town administrator to address that, having it adequately addressed as needed. To develop a wastewater management plans for each watershed, now there's two, we just identified that. It also allows that after you filed your notice of intent, you may want to file one watershed permit for both of these areas, you may want to file one permit to work with Falmouth in the Skitig area, and do a separate one for Finney's. So, there's some flexibility within this process in the next couple of years to be able to identify, how do you approach this? At this time, Title V says that within the town's embayments, there are only two areas that are nitrogenally sensitive areas, NSAs. There's a two-year period to submit the notice of intent, which we're at the end of. And now, from now until July of 2030, that's five years. That gives us our opportunity to file the permit itself. It's not going to take five years to do that. You could do it in three, you could do it in one, but you have to do it in five. The town does not need to file or complete the comprehensive wastewater management plan. If, if I understand it correctly, the consultant has offered to finish this at no additional cost. That will be up to this board whether or not they want that finished. I'm not sure what they can add to the existing document in order to address the questions that were raised by DEP, and what that might add as far as looking at the completion of a notice of intent filing and a watershed permit, but there may be something there that you could ask the consultant if that would be something worth doing. There's a question relative to whether you should abandon and close out the wastewater advisory committee, and I would ask, do you maybe not act on that this evening? Maybe think about that for a period of time. The success of treating wastewater in Born rests with the acceptance of the costs, and they're going to be huge. It's going to be the most expensive thing this town has ever done, talking $100 million plus completed. So, you need to have advocacy, you need to have education, you need to have public outreach. I think you're going to need some type of a committee to undertake those responsibilities as well as to help work on pulling this together. And I don't think it should be a big committee. I think five people would be all you'd have to need to put this together and do it well. So, I would ask you to keep the wastewater advisory committee, whatever that is, at some point, I think you're going to need it. And perhaps like a few, I wish our committees were much more successful in doing what they've been asked to do in the past, and I've written about this, and I've sent information to you about how to improve on assigning committees and responsibilities. I'd be very happy to work with the board in trying to bake that, that process better. So, I thank you for your attention this time, this evening, and I really hope you'll support the going forward with a watershed permit process. And I thank you, Madam Town Administrator, for pulling this all together. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, anyone else?
Keith Barber, Pocasset. So, I'm a member of the wastewater advisory committee, and I'm also the president of Pocasset Water Quality Coalition. And from the ground, what we are hearing is that this is necessary because of the, as Mr. Mealy said, the other side of it is that we have a five-year window to get all this done for all the people. We, we can't, it's impossible, having, in the process of doing our own home right now, I've asked for bids for four companies, only heard from two. It's very frustrating, and if that's the case now, when we don't have to do it, once we do have to do it, it's gonna be a nightmare. So, I concur with everything Mr. Mealy said, and I do think we should continue with the wastewater advisory committee, just because those of us that are on it have some experience with what we've been doing, and to stop and start over with maybe different people and a whole new process, I think would be really very wasteful. So, thanks for listening.
You're welcome. Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the pre-application schedule for the two watersheds as outlined, and that we direct the town administrator to file watershed permit notice of intents for the Finney's Harbor and Mcgansett's Tete watersheds by June 30th, 2025, if possible, but no later than June 7th, 2025.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from MJ, second from Peter. Any further discussion?
Do we have to approve the filing before it goes out?
So, I can speak to that.
Thanks.
I actually can't show you the filing, and there's nothing to sign.
It's electronic, yeah.
It's a portal.
It's a portal, yeah. The only thing you're uploading is the
The only thing that's uploaded is the schedule. The rest of it is
I did look through it, but I didn't know if there had a, a summary report that, at the end of it.
I think it's
I don't think there was.
It's optional.
Cause I did go through the, the pro, the, uh, the portal.
Yeah. I mean, I think my only comment is, I think, you know, of course, we know that, you know, this is, seems to be the best way to go. Um, I think our, you know, our apprehension was only to make sure that, you know, the burden on the town wasn't great. Um, you know, not all the town is affected by this, this two, two watersheds. There's a whole other side of the bridge where, you know, people and residents live that are gonna be paying for this because we're doing this NOI, and it's going to, of course, help those two watersheds, but we've got the whole town that's on the hook for it now, so we need to remember that when we're going forward. So, that's it, let's do a roll call. We've got a motion and a second, um, so
Can we just reread the motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, MJ.
Please.
Approve the pre-application schedule for the two watersheds as outlined, and direct the town administrator to file watershed permit notice of intents for the Finney's Harbor and Mcgansett's Tete watersheds by June 30th, 2025, if possible, but no later than June 7th, 2025.
July.
July.
July, right. All right, so we have motion from MJ, second from Peter, um, and I'll do a roll call now. So, Emery?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Melissa, yes. Five, zero, zero, unanimous. All right. So, moving on, um, I really wish I could skip up to that number nine, but Before everybody leaves, cause I thought it was important in this conversation, but I'll just, it's fine. So, discussion to dissolve the wastewater advisory committee.
I think at this point, we should defer action on dissolving the wastewater advisory committee. I know we talked about it, but we may wanna take that and maybe give it a new scope, a new focus to the committee and charge, and, you know, based on what we're doing with the NOI, you know, with the, with the watershed permit going forward, it may be, it may help us out, so I would, I would not wanna dissolve it, I would actually wanna table action and then come back with maybe a new scope and new, uh, new charge.
Okay, MJ, any thoughts?
Um, I, I tend to agree. I think, um, I think that, um, there are, the, the committee itself has evolved a little bit over time because it has, it's had different members of the Board of Health. Um, we started with a broader committee that include water districts and some more staff. We toned it down to be, um, fewer, um, people. Um, there's a new member of the Board of Health, there's a new member from the planning board that just started last year. Um, I think they've worked together, and I think that the composition of the committee with a member of the conservation board, a committee, a member of the Board of Health, a member of the planning board, a member of the sewer commissioners, allows for communication between a number of people that need to communicate on a lot of issues related to this. So, I, um, I think we should leave the committee in for a while till we get a little bit more definition of where we're going and how we're gonna proceed.
All right, Emery?
Um, I, I think it should be probably put on pause. I mean, I think the watershed, this planning and this application process is, in, in my opinion, I know we have several experts and well-versed individuals with respects to the wastewater management, um, but, um, our, our focus should just be strictly on the watershed application process and what we need to do for that. And I envision that being, um, you know, uh, a lot of the work done with consultants and special counsel.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of driving that, that process. Uh, may, like, down the road, when we have to get back to, um, the whole comprehensive wastewater management plan, and, you, um, I think there, there might be a new charge for this committee. But I don't, I don't, I don't know what part they're gonna play with water, with the application, with the permitting process, application process. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I agree, this is a valuable group of people that have worked well, and there's, and members that we certainly need advice and to work with in the future, but we need to make sure their mission and their purview is, is on track with what we need to get done. So, I think, yeah, making, maybe, not dissolving necessarily, but
Yeah.
Pause.
Yeah, I
Like in the, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Like in the last year, what has been the focus the last couple of years for, if I might ask, for, uh, the committee? Have they just, what, what
I mean, we've all been focused on the comprehensive wastewater management.
I know, cause we've had several workshops on it, I'm just like, as a board, I'm just wondering what, you know, cause I don't
Keith Barber, Pocasset. So, I think we've been trying to narrow down what we're looking at, trying to make it so it's impactful. And, um, you know, it's, we had the whole Title V, new rules, kind of set everything back a little bit, cause we had to wait and figure that out. But I, I do think that, you know, there are five or six of us who have been on that committee since the beginning, and, and we have learned sort of where we should be going. And also needs to be mentioned that the Pocasset River and Pocasset Harbor, Penn Cove, Redbrook Harbor, the NSA is coming.
Right.
So, it's probably next summer when we get that finalized by, um, you know, whoever, Buzz's Bay Coalition, you know, has been working with the state, and, and that's in the process. So, you know, to stop and then start all over is a whole new pro, who knows how many of the people that are on don't wanna do it anymore.
Right.
Or whatever it would be. So, it just seems to me, if you're, if there's a concern, then we should at least take a breath before we say, can it?
Yeah, I would say, put, put, pause it.
Pause.
Put it on pause.
If it's fine, but I, I don't
Put it on pause, and then
I don't think we should disband it.
Put it on pause until, I mean, this, this process alone for applications for, for permitting is
So, I agree. I think that we, I don't know as if it's to totally disband it right now, but I do agree, I think we should pause it until we really know what our charge is gonna be, and what are our consultants and legal people gonna look like, and what are we really doing? We've really got a lot to think about.
And we need
So, I agree, we appreciate all the hard work you've done, and the expertise on that board is, you know, I'm sure is amazing, but, um, maybe a pause is a good idea just for now.
Well, we still need to address what the state said
Correct.
About our proposal. You know, that is
Feel like we haven't finished.
Sorry?
We haven't come to the conclusion yet.
No, it, it's
Yeah, that's something, yeah.
Definitely floating around up in the air, needs to come in for a landing.
So, if that's the case. So, what's our pleasure, we, do we
Can I just say something? Because there, I don't, I don't think we have a finalized draft of a CWMP. I think we have a draft that needs to be edited. I think we have a draft that needs to have some corrections made to it. I think leaving that CWMP in the state that it's in leaves us, uh, with an unfinished document that we paid $600,000 for. And I think that really what might be a good opportunity is for the wastewater advisory committee to kind of meet and go over that document and go over some of the comments and make, as from their different perspectives of conservation, planning, Board of Health, and for them to actually come back and do what their charge is, which was to advise the select board on how they think we should address some of these comments and what suggestions they have for making a finalized document.
I'd like to hear what the town administrator thinks here, maybe. I'd like to hear your thoughts, Marla, if that's okay for me to put you on the spot.
Sure.
I don't think we ask your opinion on things often enough, so I'm asking.
So, regarding the comprehensive wastewater management plan, MEPA has told you they will not approve it as an EENF. They've told you that. They've told you that it has to go through the draft EIR and the final EIR process. So, I don't understand why you would continue working on a document that MEPA has told you will not be approved in its current state. I don't understand what the value would be to take that to town meeting without MEPA approval and without TO, 208 consistency approval, because you need both of those. So, MEPA's certificate was very clear. It will not be approved as an EENF.
Right.
So
So, both the question, yeah.
Continuing to invest, set aside the money, continuing to invest your time and your attention into a plan that you know will never be approvable, I'm struggling with, because you have so much other stuff you need to invest your time and your attention in.
My question for the chair?
Well, it's, it's, MJ is suggesting the committee could take on, working on some of that, and I think it's just because Helen offered to do it.
So, to me, we have a document, we have a document that is a document, that is a draft document, that needs to be edited, that Helen came to us and she said, I'll make the edits that need to be done. There are factually incorrect statements in that document, and I think whether it becomes a final CWMP plan taken to town meeting or not, is not the question before us. The question is, are we gonna accept a document that has inaccuracies, that has to be edited? Or are we going to spend a little bit of time and have some input in a document so that at least we have a document that's factually correct? And I, I, I am troubled by leaving a document that people are gonna refer to. You know, two years from now, or three years from now, if we do nothing with this document, the document's gonna sit there as a document with inaccurate information and that doesn't reflect that we've decided to go with watershed permits for two watersheds. So, the finalized document should at least reflect what we're, what we're actually going forward to do. If it may just be a final draft, and it may not be a totally accepted CWMP, but it's a record of what we've been doing over the past five years, and it's a record of what we spent $600,000 for. And it should be an accurate record accepted by the board as a final report.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Dwyer is at hand.
Yes, please, Bob.
I just, again, Bob Dwyer from Pocasset. Having been on the consultant side of, of something like this, where a big effort was paused for a long period of time, um, what happens on the consulting side is, uh, if there are, uh, things that are left hanging, the whole team, even if you have the same company come in, and it's, it's not clear whether you would do that after a year or two, uh, the team disappears, all the institutional expertise that you paid $600,000 to amass, that disappears. So, um, you know, any errors that are in there, um, those are gonna be forgotten, they're gonna be found later on by another review. And God forbid, um, again, there is a legal requirement to get this thing out at some point. If you pause it, there could be a public interest law firm that decides to hold feet to the fire. So, I think, um, you know, especially if Helen Gordon said that she would clean it up for free, uh, I think that's something worthy to do, and not file it, not send it to town meeting. In fact, probably, um, in the spirit of keeping your friends close and your skeptics closer, perhaps talk to some of the skeptical, um, public interest law firms and just tell them what we're going to do, or what you plan to do, um, and just get their agreement beforehand so they don't come back and, uh, and decide that, rattle the cage, et cetera. Um, uh, it's a, it's a, you know, again, a good milestone to get the thing put in place where you can amend it later on, after you have the wastewater, uh, the watershed plans for the two watersheds, or what may be four watersheds by that time. You can amend those and put those in and just edit those into the CWMP as works in progress. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Bob. All right, so what's the pleasure, are we motioning? We gonna just put this on pause? What is the motion?
I, I, yeah.
You gonna make a motion?
I just think our, I, I mean
You making the motion?
No, I'm not making a motion. I just think, you know, how much of this, we have all the comments.
No.
I, I, what, you know, to go through comments is just, it is what it is. The MEPA already went through all the comments, and their report out is based on all those comments.
I think we need to at least have a clean document with the errors, you know, have Helen do her due diligence to clean it up, and whether or not we're gonna
I just don't think we should be having workshop after workshop.
No, no.
I'm not doing that. Our focus now should be on permits.
No, and that's why I think the suggestion that If, if anyone even needs to meet at that point, I think we should just ask her to clean it up and do
Well, we did kind of give her that charge, we told her to finalize it.
Right.
At the last meeting.
Just finalize it.
Clean it up and end it, and then that was the
What you can do is, is
Go ahead, Peter.
But what we could do is reappoint the members of the wastewater advisory committee for now, and they can help finish this task with Helen. And so, it's one less thing the town administrator and staff have to worry about right now with a filing of TMDLs, you know, the notice of intent for the two watersheds. You can, Ironic is, keep parallel tracks going right now, so we can get this done. Two or two, as much as it needs to be done.
So, there isn't really money for the wastewater advisory committee to meet with Helen, but there is an opportunity for the members of the wastewater advisory committee, who worked really hard and were very instrumental and had a lot of meetings in terms of the needs assessment and, and other pieces of it. Have that committee sit down, review the comments from Helen, make suggestions, and come back to the select board with suggestions about what might be done with the document. I mean, I have some specific things myself that I think need to be done to the document, so we could make the wastewater advisory committee could come back and say, these are the things that we think need to be done, and then the select board could decide whether they want to do those or not.
Well, I'll make a motion that we reappoint the members of the wastewater advisory committee.
All right, Peters May has a motion to reappoint the wastewater the wastewater advisory committee.
Members, yeah.
Members, do we have a second?
A second.
All right.
As appropriate, because there's like the new.
Yeah.
Board of Health.
So what?
Madam Chair.
Let's get charged.
If, if the committee is reappointed as kind of discussed tonight, I would respectfully ask that you not appoint me if the plan is not going to town meeting, is not going for MIPA review, is not going for 208 consistency. I would prefer that you, that that not be added to my.
Tasks.
Tasks, yes.
Okay, understood. All right, so Peter motioned, MJ second.
We should be probably specific because there's people in our packet to get. There's people that have already been reappointed and there's people in our packet to be reappointed tonight. So maybe, maybe the motion should be continue the wastewater advisory committee with nine members, not including the town administrator.
I withdraw my motion and that'll be my new motion.
So we don't have to, we don't specifically vote for just Chris and Margaret?
I would, whatever's in our packet tonight, we voted a couple of members last time. Then we would do these, we would do that.
Is two more to vote on.
And then, and I think Keith Barber needs to be appointed because somehow he didn't get put on our list. But we have to do that at another meeting because it wasn't on the agenda as an appointment.
All right, so. Peter, Reese, 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 can you please give your motion again?
Continue the wastewater advisory committee with nine, as with nine members, not including the town administrator.
All right, so we have a Peter motion, second from MJ. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Ann Marie.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ.
Yes.
Melissa. Five, zero, zero. Okay. So continued development of the CWMP, that's sort of the, I mean, I know the wastewater advisory committee is different. So discussion regarding this, we just kind of had some of this discussion that we had thought that we would have her finish it up, be done with it. That's how I feel. But I'm going to let you, let everyone speak and go ahead, whoever wants to speak on that first. Discuss it here.
I'm, I'm waiting.
I think, I think there are other additional edits that need to be made to the document. And I think that the select board is going to have to vote on those changes that they want the consultant to make as part of finalizing the document. And I think that asking the wastewater advisory committee to come up with a list of those recommended changes for a future meeting and at which point we can, at some point finalize the draft of the CWMP as a document we can accept. We have not voted to accept that document, and I don't think it's in a. I don't think it's in a format that can be accepted at this time.
Well, the motion is continued development of the CWMP, which we are not going to be doing. So should we vote on, that's what we're voting on, correct?
Right.
All right, so do we have a motion on that? Does somebody want to make that motion? How that should sound?
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah, I would say take no action on it.
Yeah, we take no action?
Right.
On the development of this.
Okay, so we'll take no action. So we vote to take no action?
The motion, the motion to take no action.
Take no action.
On the continued development of the CWMP at this time.
I think that we should just table the item.
Yeah.
What if I mean take no action?
All right, why don't we table the development of the CWMP till we have further details? That's fine.
Yeah.
So move.
All right.
But is that what, is that what we're talking about in here? Or are we talking about continuing developing and not?
That's what I was saying.
Like, I, we're not continuing to develop the CWMP.
We're not.
Our focus should be on the permit application for the watersheds.
So maybe tabling it isn't the way. Maybe we should just vote to not continue to develop the CWMP.
Right, I think that's different than just having the wastewater advisory committee.
Right.
Make the recommendations on a final report.
I read, I read it differently. I mean, developing the CWMP is continuing to finalize a document.
Marlene, your thoughts?
I.
Do you mind if I ask you?
I mean, if you're not going to bring it to town meeting, it's not a CWMP.
It's right.
Good point.
We're not going to bring it to.
It's nowhere near in it.
We're not going to bring it to this town meeting?
We're not bringing.
But at some point, we're going to bring it to a town meeting?
You can't.
No.
You can't.
No.
What MIPA is not, hasn't, we can't.
It's not going to be, we're not going to be able to use it.
We're not going to be able to use it.
Not going to have the same purpose. But the idea is to clean it up so that the information is accurate.
Are you required to have a CWMP?
No.
No?
No.
No.
No, we were doing a comprehensive approach.
Yeah.
That was our approach to this, which was not really kicking the can down the road, in my opinion.
But what is, what was Conservation Law Foundation looking for?
All right, so what's the motion here? Let's move on, we're getting, we're getting there.
I think we should just table this until.
I think we should table the discussion until we have made, until we have an opportunity to discuss finalizing.
So we, we had that already vote. So we had to table the discussion until we have further information. We have a motion from MJ, I thought, or was it Peter?
Yeah.
Motion from Peter.
Oh, to table?
Yeah. And a.
Table item 8C.
8C.
Table item 8C.
And we have a motion from MJ, so roll call, Ann Marie.
Yes.
And Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
MJ.
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Oh, giddokey, okay.
C and D.
C and D, actually. Tabling C and D. Thank you. Perfect. All right. So this would be, I'm going to hand this to Marlene because she's the one who, I'm assuming, you're going to know what resources are we going to really need to, you know, we've got consulting contracts, staffing, there's a lot to be said with this NOI. So let's talk about that a little bit.
So if we're, in order to move forward with the watershed permitting process, that requires putting together the full-blown plan, permit-level plan for these two watersheds. And I'm, the board is going to need to make some decisions on how you want to proceed here. Now, if you, and you're going to need to make some decisions relatively early on because it's going to drive the track that it's going to put the conversation on. So if you are going to move forward with strategies in watersheds that are heavily reliant on IA technology, onsite IA septic systems, if that is going to be a large component of your strategy to meet your target, you're going to need to hire a different type of consultant and you're going to have to hire specialized legal help. If you're going to rely on strategies for, that are heavily reliant on traditional sewer systems, municipally owned and operated centralized sewer systems, you're going to need to hire a different type of engineer and you're going to have to hire a different type of legal help. Specifically one who, specifically a legal firm that is well-versed in betterments, infrastructure betterments. So I don't, the board is going to have to determine what you want before I can write a scope of work. The other thing that I need the board to talk about and think about is the process you want to use to contract with consulting firms. Whether or not you want to use a, essentially a bidding process where you put out a scope of work, you receive proposals, and you evaluate them. Or if it makes sense for you to consider utilizing the engineering exemption in 30B that's available to you. Some things you should probably consider are, does it make sense to contract with the same firm for McGan's at Squidteak that is working currently in Palmoth? They use GHD. And for Finney's Harbor, does it, is there value to contracting with the firm that Sandwich is working with as the lead agency with Joint Base Cape Cod, which is Wright Pierce? So these are, these are discussions that you have to have upfront. Because if you hire the wrong people, you're going to, we're going to be in no good place, right? The other thing that you have to think about upfront is if you're entering into a permit, it's the town's responsibility to ensure compliance when and if you get that permit, which means that you will have to bring on staff to ensure compliance. And again, depending on what your strategy is, our, your staffing needs will be different. So if your strategy is heavily IA compliant, or heavily IA component, then your staffing strategy is going to be centered around the health department. If your strategies are based on sewer, your staffing plan has to be based on DPW. So there's, these are different. And if you do one in one watershed and the other in watersheds, the other watershed, you have to understand you will need both. So this is something that you have to think about upfront because it's going to set the entire framework for everything that follows. You can't get to the end of this and then decide we, that's not what we want to do, right? You have to follow the entire process to the end and you have to anticipate that you, by entering into a permit, you're, the municipal body, the municipality will be legally responsible for ensuring compliance. So there is going to be a need along, in these five years, there's going to be a need to build out that capacity internally within the staff structure as well.
Right.
But what, the board has to be very clear on what it is you're trying to do so that we can work really hard to make sure that you have the, the team assembled who can help you get there. Because if we're not clear on what you're trying to achieve, we're not going to be successful.
Thank you, Marlene. Any comments, questions? All right, moving on. We're doing all right, we're getting down there. So number nine, it's just a quick really policy discussion about social media communication. I have a little statement prepared. So we will not be debating or digging deep here on this agenda item. It's just, I just wanted the public to understand in advance that this will be an important topic of discussion at our annual retreat on June 25th. My goal as chair is to keep every resident on equal footing and shield the select board from inadvertently sharing data that could lead or spread misinformation, period. Over the past couple of weeks, I have been approached by several residents who have expressed concern about our select board members discussing official town business inside private or semi-private social media groups. And I do share that concern. I'm aware that our born residents, including myself, may use Facebook and other platforms in search of quick updates about town events, holiday trash pickup. Might I add, most of which can also be found on our website, and I respect that. However, recent events have shown why select board business deliberations, and this may be my personal opinion, and I do not know that others, the others on this select board feel the same, but I feel they do not belong in private or semi-private social media groups. As chair, I believe every resident, whether or not they are, they use Facebook, Instagram, or any other social media platform, deserve equal access to the same information and the same opportunity to weigh in on it. For those reasons, although I know some of our select board members choose to do so, I personally will not be posting or responding to select board-related matters on any social media site, nor do I have the time, the free time, to spend to face, to monitor the Facebook pages to, to be able to respond to people. I mean, it's not my job, I'm not an admin of the born residence page. I honestly have no business acting like one. So instead, I'll continue to be available via telephone, face-to-face, text messages, and to answer questions that are allowable, I will say that. And I will share information in settings designated for public business. And that would be our posted meetings, official town email, town website. Again, that's where a lot of our information is. This is my, this, in my opinion, protects transparency, fairness, and everyone's right to be heard. We appreciate how quickly news travels on Facebook, Instagram, and several other sites. They keep us all connected, right? But when we as select board members comment on town business and space, town business and spaces that are not universally accessible, things can get out of context and again, misinformation can be spread. Case in point. A recent example illustrates why these boundaries matter. A handful of social media posts suggested that this board had voted against filing an NOI. That never happened. In truth, we were simply still in discussions weighing the impacts of, for our town. As a town of born, as our town of born comprehensive wastewater management plan, which started in 2021, before my tenure even began, and hadn't reached the same level of completeness that our neighboring towns had already had before they filed. So just so we're clear, the select board has never taken such a vote. Yet unfortunately, the online misrepresentation promoted letters of criticism from not only residents but regional organizations that relied on this secondhand information, which was frustrating, to say the least. So going forward, if you have any questions about NOI, watershed permits, or any other issues, bring them to our public meetings or contact the town administrator's office. That's what they're there for, to support our people, to support the residents. As select board, there's certain things that we cannot discuss. We're not supposed to interfere with the day-to-day operations. And with respect, I just wanted to be sure I put that out there. Again, this will be a topic of discussion at our retreat. Thank you. So anyone else would like to comment or say anything in regards to that? That was the point of that policy discussion this evening.
It'd be better, my comments would be better, better left for the retreat.
As such, I'm looking forward to having a discussion about communication at our retreat.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Agreed.
But I will say this. I, I know it's what gets me re-elected every three years. I've been known to be transparent on what I'm putting town information out there and I'm not going to change, point blank.
I can appreciate that, but I don't have a Facebook page and I can't see the residence page and I can't read the comments and I can't make a comment, so that's very private. And that just feels like a poor way to represent.
It's not, everybody doesn't, isn't a member of it either. And that was the resident complaint, you know, that they're, not everyone is on Facebook. So therefore, information's being disseminated to certain people and not others.
And on the residence page on top of it, that's another layer.
It's not a town page either.
Correct.
Most of the information I put out there is been, it's, it's public record, it's on the website. You know, eventually, eventually, you know, it's an email that anybody can see. So it's, to me, I know, it's, yeah, maybe a private, it may be a private group, but they can also get the information out in other ways. So it's not like I'm. So it's not like I'm giving them any special treatment.
Okay. So it's just gonna be a nice robust conversation, I'm sure we'll have it. So moving on, licensing events. So we have licensing, we have a liquor license amendment for Ryan Family Amusements Inc. Doing Businesses Ryan Family Amusements, Change of Corporate Structure and Name. Do we have them here? I see online. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Introduce yourself and your, and where you're from, please.
Thank you very much. I'm Mr. Paul Tarter. I'm an attorney in Palmeth. And I represent Ryan Family Amusements Inc., now known as Ryan Family Amusements LLC, which holds an angle wide and small liquor license for a property at 200 Main Street and Borg. And I'm working with Mike Rossi from Comcast and I will file the application. This is really an administrative type of request. We have just changed the form of ownership from a corporation here in Massachusetts to a LLC here in Massachusetts. All of the, all of the presidents and treasurers directors are also still members of the new LLC. They've just converted the, from the corporation form of ownership to an LLC, having the same ownership interest. So we would request that the board approve the application.
Thank you, sir. Pretty, pretty, pretty cut and dry there. I think that's pretty explainable. And any questions from the board?
Motion to approve the liquor license amendment for a change in corporate structure and name from Ryan Family Amusements Inc. to Ryan Family Amusements LLC.
All right. So we have a motion from Ann Marie.
Second.
Second from MJ. Any other, any further discussion? All right. Roll call, vote. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes? Five zero zero, you're all set? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Let me go up here, sorry. Okay. Next, we have the new annual common victuals license for Take a Break Cafe, 105 Trobridge Road, Born. Do we have them here? I don't see anyone. All right.
Motion to approve the annual common victual license for Take a Break Cafe LLC located at 105 Trobridge Road, contingent upon the successful completion and passing of all final required inspections.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Motion by, Ann Marie, second. Roll call. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes? Five zero zero. And this one is for, for a break.
Take a break.
I like that. Sounds good.
That must be inside the.
Yeah, hotel or the bus stop. Yeah, the market.
Yeah, the market.
All right. Perfect. All right. So moving on, consideration of events. Pamela Spencer, use of Buzzes Bay Park for a celebration of life on August 10th, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve Angela's event? I don't believe, Pamela's event? I don't believe she's here.
Motion to approve the application from Pamela Spencer for the use of Buzzes Bay Park for a celebration of life on August 10th, 2025.
Okay. So a motion.
Second.
From vice chair, Serunian. Second from Peter.
I guess, I just want to reiterate that the last few events we've had, people stake, stake stuff in the ground, even though the policy says that you don't. So just be careful. It's, they don't.
All right. Thank you. All right. Roll call, vote. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes? All right. Now we have our consent agenda. We have an executive letter as authorized by May 20th, 2025, annual election regarding whole tech, annual committee appointments that are attached. We have Cub South's PAC 1620, use of Buzzes Bay Park for their end-of-year meeting on June 18th, 2025, rain date 6/25/25. D, one-day liquor license for sale in beer and wine issued to Eric Christensen Pours and Bites LLC at Buzzes Bay Park for Canal Day on September 20th, rain date 9/20/21. Monument Beach Civic Association, use of Station 4. Monument Beach for the annual ice cream social on July 16th. F, American Lung Association, use of Town Roads for their 41st Autumn Escape Bike Trek on September 27th. G, Salt Marsh Lane, neighborhood use of Town Roads and Town Vehicle Participation for a Fourth of July Parade on July 5th, rain date 7/6. One-day liquor license for the sale of beer and wine issued to Samantha Bolin National MS Society at Marit, Mass Maritime Academy, 101 Academy Drive, June 28th, 2025. J, sorry, I, Baccasset Village Association, use of Barlow's Landing for their annual picnic on August 9th, 2025. J, finally, Final Wings Neck Trust, use of Town Roads and Town Vehicle Participation for a Fourth of July Parade on July 5th, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still move.
Second.
All right. Motion. Ann Marie? Second by Peter. All right. Roll call. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes? It's, so moved. Five zero zero. Okay. We're getting there. All right. We have a presentation by the town administrator to discuss the town of Born website at end of support, migration required. I was wondering when this was coming, actually. It's really weird.
So I will be very quick. The, their, slides are in your packet, starting on page 45. This is essentially, it's essentially an operational decision. We, we literally have to do this in order to continue to have a website. The functionality, we're staying, it's still civic plus, there's no cost, there's no budget impact. The functionality will remain the same. This is the structure and framework of the website. On page 47 and 48, it'll, that's an example. We'll put our own picture in there, we'll put our.
That's what our new segment will look like?
Yeah. This'll, this'll be the landing page. Everything will be migrated over, all of the documents in the background, all of the records, all of the appointments, calendar items. We do use, we do use the support in the background, on the backend of the website regularly. We have, we need, we reach out, we have broken links, there are bugs that crop up that we need to address. And by the end of November of the year, our version will no longer be supported. And that's, we need to move over. Again, it's no cost, same, same vendor, same platform, same functionality. It's, it's going to have a new look and feel to it, but all of the information will still be there in the background. This, it will, the, after the migration, we will, our website will look similar to what you see if you log on and look at Orleans, or Chatham, or Eastham. They have the same basic structure. It's fully accessible, so it will meet the accessibility requirements for, that are coming under the law, and it will be more easily usable on a mobile device.
This is awesome. But I'm gonna let everyone else first. Anyone have any comments?
I guess fine, on the front page here, the Citizen Action Center, where you're like at the splash pad. The property card record is probably one of the most popular things that they go on, they do, they look at the field cards and stuff. So hopefully, that there's a way, if they can, if they can identify what bullets on the Citizen Action Center is mostly used, that maybe you can find a way to get it on the front page of this new website, so it's easier and, you know, to them to grab.
Department assessors.
Those buttons on the left will, will be things that we will also have, they'll look a little bit different, but we'll have a new button.
Okay. That's all, I guess.
I love this. I think this is amazing. I think it's really about time we kind of get a new face to our website. This really pleases me a lot. I think it'll be much more, anything that's been upgraded. And I was actually really excited to see that it was out of its life, because then I'm like, oh, good, that means we get something new. And I don't love our website, I have to be honest. It's not bad, it just doesn't, like, like you said, Marlene, I think there's some bugs, some tweaks, this will really help fix that. So, good work, nice work.
And it could only get a little more user-friendly, too.
Yeah, but template's a little.
It had nothing to do with me. We have to do it. There's no.
It's a, it's a must. So that's good. Yeah, I also, I, yeah, our current one is clunky, and I said the template and everything's kind of old and rudimentary, but I was also struck with the open meeting law and the training and hearing that it should be a couple of clicks away, the information you're looking for, and the amount of things that you have to click several times to get. It would be nice if there was, if some of the, if the new template and some of this can make some of that access, like to a calendar, instead of calendar, click, agenda, click, documents, click, click, click.
I'm not gonna promise that.
No, because I looked at, I looked at Watertown, for example, you know, busy, busy town, their calendar is jam-packed, you know, whereas we open it up and we see a list of meetings, they've got like, every other, they've got, and you can kind of run a cursor over it and it pops up a, you know, like a, it doesn't click to, it's just a window that comes up that reads more. But that's, that's a real challenge. But if this facilitates, you know, it helps us move a little bit longer, gives us a cleaner look and people can navigate better.
But as we evolve with this, we should do some educational pieces on this, so when it's ready to go live, the public knows how to use it and everything else. So if it means, you know, just, you know, the work with Born TV, to do a YouTube-type thing where you, where it can just go out there, you know, in advance, you know, it will just make it a lot easier, the implement, once it's out there, so just public education.
Is this gonna be able to integrate with AI? I know I'm bringing up the AI thing all the time, but it's, it would be, it seems like it's good where other towns have utilized AI to answer some questions for people through the website, just to get them started or direct them somewhere?
I'll have to get.
I mean, that's another level.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Let me look into that. I mean, this is literally, a completely free, it's not an upgrade.
Right. It's not a new website, it's just a new one.
Yeah, like, like a.
Yeah. Yeah. That's another level. That'll be another agenda someday.
Moving on, letter of support, District Attorney Galliboy's, Prevention of Elder Abuse and Scams.
Motion to sign a letter for, that we send to District Attorney Galliboy's in support of elder abuse and fraud, and, you know, his initiative on elder abuse and fraud.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Peter.
Accept the, the draft letter and instruct the chair to sign it.
Do we have a second?
MJ, second.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Didn't hear that. MJ, second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Moving on. Town administrator's report.
We're doing minutes, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm here, I report first, I'm sorry.
We've had a couple of winters in a row where the town did not need to calling contractors for snow and ice removal, and I know that this was a concern of some select board members in the past. I want to let you know that this past winter, we did utilize private contractors on four occasions. We have a broken mooring chain for the swim float at Monument Beach. We have scheduled the replacement of that mooring, and as soon as it is fixed, the float will be installed. The other two floats are already in and have been installed.
Where are those?
Electric Ave and.
Hen Cove.
Hen Cove. I would like to let the board know that I will be working with IT to propose a capital project for the fall town meeting to improve the audio and visual capabilities in this meeting room. This is not a project that I had anticipated, so I do not currently have a budget to make any improvements before town meeting. The Cape Cod Commission will be holding a virtual regional policy plan subcommittee meeting tomorrow, June 18th at 9:00 a.m. Meeting information is available on the commission's website for anyone who may wish to attend. The Shore and Harbor Committee is exploring four public options for the use of the dredge spoils that have been left in Monument Beach. There are three places we may be able to use it in Born for beach nourishment, and we are also confirming whether or not Sandwich may have funds to take any. Comcast was scheduled to begin the high-definition equipment installation today in this building. I have not yet heard if it was completed. However, once the installation is complete, the signal trans, and the signal transmission is confirmed, the HD channel launch will be scheduled. Roof work continues roughly on schedule at Fire Station 3, and we hope to have the project substantially complete by the end of this month. Water quality testing began at the bathing beaches on June 4th and will continue weekly on Wednesdays through Labor Day. The official opening day was June 9th, which is five days after the collection of the first water quality sample. We will also be updating some signs over the next couple of weeks at Sagamore Beach, Picture Lake, Queen Soul Pond, and Pettuist Beach. We sample nine public beaches and additional nine semi-public beaches, which are owned by private entities. Although these semi-private beaches are not owned by the town, the health department does notify the public and will post signs if any closures occur due to water quality concerns there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we have meeting minutes for May 27th and May 28th. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Do I have a comment on May 28th? The May 28th minutes didn't include the responses from DEP. And there were, there was a lot of documentation of all the public comments that were made, but I think that the questions and answers from DEP should be in those minutes, and I would request that that be added.
On the 28th?
Yeah.
So why don't we approve the 5/27 and table the 28th until that can be edited?
So move.
All right. So we have a motion from Peter to approve 5/27, table 5/28.
Yes.
All right. Second from MJ. All right. Roll call. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa? Five zero zero. Okay. Of course, committee reports. Do you have any committee reports?
I'm just gonna say that I went to the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association meeting on Friday morning, and there was a very excellent presentation on the proposed cooperative composting facility for Joint Base Cape Cod. Phil Goddard was there as one of the presenters, and it was very well done. And there was a lot of interest on the Cape about the importance of this. So it was very good.
Thank you. I did attend the, my first trustee meeting today with Don Ellis Chair, so we walked the property with the other members and sort of evaluated any rust, rot, you know, missing boards, stuff like that. So that was my report for that. That's it so far for me. That's it. Anybody else? All right.
Southside Fire Station meeting.
That would be correspondence is next.
Didn't you go to the FM, the federal funds? Did you go to that?
I did.
Community college?
Oh, yeah. I was on Zoom.
Oh.
Yeah. Peter, Peter was there and spoke.
Yeah, we got the slides.
Perfect.
And then, Ann Marie and I were at the Cape, with Marlene, with the Cape Bridges beating last week. Which is always.
They were doing the Sagamore interchange there.
And the shared-use path discussion.
Correspondence, select board's correspondence for June 17th, 2025. A, Price email regarding Septic. B, Sterling email regarding watershed NOI. C, York email regarding Collins Center. D, Cape Lake Compact A1 report. E, pedestrian slash bike pathway committee letter regarding resolution, House Bill 3654. F, Hampton in request to extend license agreement regarding land between hotel and canal. G, Mass DOT letter regarding temporary access to property for Bridges program. H, Xfinity channel change, loss of New England cable news. I, Bloomfield letter regarding watershed notice of intent. J, Conservation Committee comments on Cape Cod Canal Pipeline Relocation Project. And K, Cape and Bridges Coalition Quarterly Meeting Presentation, June 2025. news. I, Bloomfield letter regarding watershed notice of intent. J, Conservation Committee comments on Cape Cod Canal Pipeline relocation project. And K, Cape and Bridges Coalition quarterly meeting presentation, June 2025.
Thank you. All right. So future agenda items related to correspondence and other items, future discussion?
Yes. With what has come down the last 24 hours about the Marine Life Center, I think we should look and bring the Marine Life Center Executive Director in for the committee and just give a report of what's going on over there. You know, we can't get involved in there day-to-day, but I just think, you know, just, it wouldn't hurt just to hear from them and see what their progress or lack of progress is.
I'm not sure I agree on that. I, I mean, there are lease, we have several leases with a lot of other people in the town and I'm not so sure, but I don't know. I guess.
I mean, it doesn't hurt. I mean, we've, we've had them before us in the past to give an update. It's no different than what we've done in the past.
All right. Okay. I don't know. I'll have to talk to the town administrator and get her thoughts on that and figure out what we want to do with that. What do the other board, how does the other board feel? You feel, anyone? Do we want to wait, put it on the, I don't know. What are we doing with that? So just a recommendation, so.
I mean, I wouldn't mind hearing what, what's going on.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for.
It's a pretty prominent place on Main Street, but it's definitely not a priority.
Yeah, it's definitely not a priority.
Yeah, but we can wait, we can wait till the end of summer. It's not urgent, but I think we should hear from it some point.
We could ask him at some point to come talk with us and check in. Sure. All right. Anything else? So next meeting dates, June 24th is the Board of Sewer Commissions. We have our annual retreat on the, the annual retreat on the 25th. Been a long day. July 10th, 29th will be our Board of Sewer Commissioners again. And August 5th, Select Board. August 19th, Board of Sewer Commissioners. And August 26th, Select Board. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right. We have a motion from Anne Marie. Second from Jean. All in favor, you can just say aye for this one.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's okay. I just.